Eight oh one, we're back in regular session, item number seventeen. Discussion and action to approve proposed development agreement for Vista Bonita Estates.
At this time, I would like to deny the agreement of Vista Bonita. That has nothing, that thing does nothing for the city of Socorro at this time. So, move a motion to deny.
Thank you, council, that's the best news I've heard all day long. Oh, I hope we go through with it on your final vote. I would like to request additional time, I realize we've talked about this for, like I said earlier, forty-nine months. We've gone over four years plus one month doing this. We're totally against this, we should find another solution to this. They need to find their own access, entrance roads elsewhere, in the county, within the county, and stay out of the city property. We tried so many different options initially to block the roads. We were supposed to get barricades, we never did. Before I go any further, I would like to request that you might be able to extend my time.
I'll make a motion to extend his time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll second.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Robina?
Yes.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. It's, uh, this is really important to us. It's, uh, I feel like it's gonna depreciate our area in the, for the most part. Because of the way the development was initially proposed, that it was gonna be houses and stuff like this, and then it later went into lots. Well, I don't think that the county is going to regulate any of the ordinance and enforce any of the ordinance. I do realize that Socorro has a hard time enough as it is within the city limits enforcing a lot of the ordinances that we do have in existence already. So, having said that, I would like to request that some of my neighbors are allowed to come out and speak, even though they did not sign up, would that be possible?
Make a motion to approve.
To allow any speaker to sign up, that deny sign up?
To allow for constituents to come up and speak, even though they didn't sign up. Motion to approve.
And we want to keep it at two minutes. If we're gonna, yes.
Second.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. You know, we've gone back and forth and we've tried so many different ways and avenues to work with this developer as far as using that easement, the rock wall. They'll still be out of compliance on the roadway widths, even with they do take the forty-five foot easement. And that's not something that I don't think that the city needs to go into and start making amendments to the city ordinance throughout the city of Socorro. And that's what will put you in that type of a situation. And then again, Tres Caballos is twenty-two feet wide. There's no way we can accommodate that amount of traffic on Rancho Viejo as well. There are so many things, we're gonna lose, we all go walking on the ditch bank right now. That's our only egress that we have, so we can go out and get any type of exercise. We'll be losing that as well. They have something like fifty, fifty-two lots that back up to the ditch bank, to the lateral. The last time I talked to E B I D., they had not even applied for a permit for the bridge. Did they add that cost to us? I say us, the city. It's not, the numbers aren't there. So, I just don't see it benefiting the city of Socorro or the residents in my area at all. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, thank you for allowing me to come up and speak. Jesus Morales, I live at five three nine Rancho Viejo, and I lived there for the last thirteen years. I've been coming here for the meetings regarding the Vista Bonita Estates. And at some point, it seemed that we were getting some progress, but now it seems like we're back to square one. I don't see any benefit for the city as far as tax, taxes or anything. The property is not even part of the city. And the only ones that are gonna end up losing, if it does go through, is gonna be your constituents and the city of El Paso, of Socorro. I just feel that it's not a good thing for us and for that to be stopped. I already seen construction started, Phase One, on that property. And it seems that even though everything is on hold, but the construction is already moving on and starting. So, whatever help you can give us, we'll appreciate it, thank you.
Anybody else wishes to come up and speak?
My name is Huelo Lopez Alcido, and I live at four forty Rancho Viejo. Since that has already started, because I drove through there, does that mean that it's a done deal? Because when this was approved, this Phase One was approved, I understood it to say that it was contingent depending on the wall, the Anderson Road, and possibly blocking Tres Caballos. That was contingent, approved contingent upon that request. And it looks like there's already construction there. The fact that they're going to have self ponding, to me, is bad. There, I don't know if you all watched on the news, there's an infestation of bugs on the ground in that area. So, for a lot of reasons, a lot of reasons, I don't think it's a good idea. We love our area, and I definitely would not like to see traffic going through Tres Caballos. I would like for that to be possibly maybe put a barricade up. And I hope that you all will take that into consideration. We've been here too long, thank you.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Robina?
Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and action on approving the unadmitted financial reports for April two thousand nineteen.
We already did that, oh no?
Eighteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number nineteen, discussion and action to adopt a resolution five seventy-three approving the submission of a grant application to the Texas Community Development Block Grant Programs two thousand nineteen Fire Ambulance Service Truck Fund. The city's required cash match contribution is five thousand dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Valdez, Grants Coordinator. The Texas Department of Agriculture has the twenty nineteen Fire Ambulance Service Truck Fund, what they call the FAST Fund. The state anticipates it will have eight million dollars in funding available to communities like Socorro. We are requesting up to five hundred thousand dollars in funding for the procurement of two EMS ambulance vehicles to serve the Socorro community. The two vehicles will also include a patient loading system mount, the stretcher and the mount, as well as two cardiac monitors slash defibrillators that will be available. The match is five thousand dollars, and that is a cash match.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty, discussion and action to adopt a resolution five seventy-four authorizing the city of Socorro to submit a grant application to the Office of the Governor's Fiscal Year eighteen Operation Stone Garden to fund overtime and equipment for personnel supporting the border initiative. There is no match requirement for this grant.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The, we have already submitted the application for F Y eighteen Operation Stone Garden, and we brought you the inter-local agreement, however, it is required to have a resolution that is uploaded into the E Grant system for this grant.
Senator Noguez? Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Robina?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to approve the submission of a grant application to the Paso del Norte Health Foundation's Ignite Initiative for the Youth and Culture Program. The city's cash match contribution is eight thousand dollars from the currently approved fiscal year nineteen budget.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon again, the Paso del Norte Health Foundation Ignite Initiative is, the goal is to help disconnected, what they call disconnected youth, youth that are currently not engaged in an after-school program. And they provide funding for agencies to connect the youth through high-quality after-school programming. The city wants to submit a grant to the Paso del Norte Health Foundation. We've been invited to submit a full proposal in the second round of applications. The Youth and Culture Program that we are proposing will serve at least one hundred Socorro youth by providing culture, arts, and music programming here in Socorro through after-school sessions, as well as summer camps and intercession camps for kids ages five through seventeen. Our match is eight thousand dollars from our approved F Y nineteen budget.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Jim, since we're talking about the budget for nineteen, we haven't approved the budget, right? For F Y nineteen? Oh, it's this year, sorry, my bad. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It's 'cause what I was gonna say is that, could we change the budgets instead from four to after the meeting? Since we're talking about budget, I thought it would be nice.
Oh, yeah, but it's the next one.
Okay. All right.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Robina?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-two, discussion and action to approve the purchase of a modular building. Sell proposal by board number five fifty-six point eighteen or headquarters in the amount of five hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars, and to authorize city manager or her designee to execute agreement.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Do we have a speaker for this item, Sal Chagoya?
Yes, just wanted to mention to council that I think this is a good idea to have our police department centralized in one area right now, because I brought some concerns to chief burden that I feel that the brass is over there by Moon Road and by Puna, and the officers are over here on Rio Vista. So, there's no accountability when it comes to that. But I think if they're together, then it will defeat the purpose, and I think we'll have a more unified police department. Not only that, but of course there'll be accountability, since now the brass is gonna be with the officers. So, I'm for it. I know it's a little costly, but I think it's a good investment down the long run, thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Yeah.
Before, we need to add to the motion, because we want to purchase this with the COs certificate of obligations, but in order for us to order it, we would need to do what we do with the onion field and borrow from your general fund and pay back with once we get the COs.
Okay, so then I'll make.
It has to be part of the whole.
Yeah, if you're essentially transferring, it's a short-term transfer.
Right, so it's just, we're just, okay, so my motion would read.
And it's just for the deposit.
Okay, so it's just for the deposit. So then my motion would read something like, make a motion to approve the purchase with money from, for the deposit from the general fund, that would be reimbursed with our COs.
Ms. Diallo Bos?
So, this is the same building we had talked about at our last meeting.
This is the same building we talked about, but not originally when we talk about modular buildings. So, that was one that we were looking at that was a used building originally. It was, when we actually went to see if we could get that, and it moved on. There was a lead on a second one, but that was only in pieces. So then we had to start looking at a new build. And like the discussion we had last time is if we wanted to do a brick and mortar, it would be around twelve million, which is what the Horizon Building costs. This would be a thirty-year building, and it would give us the security that we're looking for, not only for the police department, but we're also looking to move such things as evidence there to give us a more secure evidence type holding, and also our impound lot, which has been broken into in the past, so.
And so, we did talk about it at the workshop.
Right. Oh, okay. It was a workshop, okay.
Right, and that was just a clarification, is that I had briefed the body on the capital improvement program, and it does have this project in there.
Okay, I remember now. So, and do we not hold these vehicles? Are these the type of vehicles where they have to come and pay a fee, or this is just for evidence?
Both. So, this could be something that we seize short-term, because it was instrument of a crime. That case proceeds through court very quickly, and the vehicle is released. Or they can apply for a hardship through the court saying, hey, somebody else used it, but it's actually my vehicle, I need it for transportation, whatever it is, then we can release it that way. Or these could be long-term, some of these vehicles that we have there now are nine to ten years old. We've also, one of the jobs that I had one of the officers doing was to see if we could get rid of those vehicles. And when we called the district's attorney, some of those are still on hold, even though it's nine years ago.
Wow, okay. And do we, does the city collect for the funds for these vehicles being held?
I don't know.
Okay. All righty, I mean, it's a good question, do we get answered, or should we? The other question I had for you, the other things, they will be used for, have we decided what they're gonna be used for?
So, communication and dispatch has to stay where it is, because it's just too costly to move the antenna and communication system. We don't presently have a lockup plan for the modular building. That would be additional funding. If that becomes available, then that was something that we can do. So, our lockup facility would have to stay here, R V S. What we would be looking to give up completely would be the Vineyard Complex, but there may be another use for that, depending on the city's position on the ambulance services.
Okay. Thank you.
I did.
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-five, discussion and action on approval request for the bike run event for Race El Paso to be held June twenty-third, two thousand nineteen, along Socorro Road, starting at the Tiua Boulevard extending to Denton Road.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
So, this event, what they're doing is, this is an event that they have every year. The reason this is our first time that it comes to city council is because they are now expecting a larger crowd. Ordinance requires that when they expect over two hundred participants, they get permission from city council before they have the event. It's gonna be affecting one and a half miles inside Socorro, and it's gonna extend into San El Estadio, and then they're gonna go back. It's estimated to last about three hours, more or less. By ten in the morning, all the streets should be open. Traffic control that they're proposing is they hired the El Paso Sheriff to help with, to divert traffic or take control of the traffic.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Robina?
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-six, discussion and action on approval request to waive the event permit for the Anio Bazar of La Purissima Socorro Mission.
Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I hate to be the bad guy, but I always have to say this, it's like, I don't like the fact that we're waiving permit fees. I know it's, you know, we're not, I'm just, I'm just, I mean, it's only, what's our permit fee? What's our permit fee? Thirty-five?
It's actually a hundred and twenty-five, what an event permit costs.
Hundred and twenty-five, it's only a hundred and twenty-five. I mean, it, I'm just saying, I'm just, I just don't like it that we were waiving them. But, you know, there'd be known that I said that.
Mr. Arta?
A couple of meetings back?
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, I know, all I'm saying is, I just don't like the fact. That's all I'm saying. No.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-seven, discussion and action on the proposed conditional use permit for a mechanic shop on Track eleven, Block seven, Socorro Grant, at ninety-nine forty-five Alameda Avenue. Do we have a motion? Item twenty-seven, do we have a motion?
Uh, yes, yes, we do.
Motion to deny based on the recommendations from our staff and our Board of Commissioners.
So, this item was presented last year on December eighth, and they were given six months to see if they can comply and abate some of the violations that were detected back in the days. You requested an update within six months to see how they were doing, if they were able to remove some of the violations. We made an inspection on June the third, this Monday, and none of the violations have been abated. Everything remains the same, and we found additional violations now.
Aye.
Mr. Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number twenty-eight, discussion and action to approve calendar for charter amendment workshops for the two thousand twenty election.
Make a motion to, yeah, make a motion to approve, I already remember the date, yes.
Are you gonna be here on Saturdays?
Oh, yes. Or do you guys have a change of?
Just real quick, July tenth through the fifteenth or sixteenth, I am in a conference.
Okay.
Just so you know that, I won't be here, I apologize, it was booked in advance, in advance, at the conference.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. Anybody else? Don't ask. You guys wanna do it after our meetings?
I'd vote for that, after our meetings.
After our council meeting?
After our regular meeting. Even if it's half an hour after, that's, guys, what do you think?
What about before, that way we have a set time?
We're having an issue with the budget, so we're, I was thinking I would.
Can we make it a part of the agenda, of the regular meeting?
I mean, we can, however, they're charter amendments, so it's gonna take you a lengthy.
Yeah, so I, I.
It's a lengthy process.
We can have a special right after our meeting is adjourned.
Or, I would say, maybe five thirty, the half hour before we start our council meeting.
Is that half an hour enough?
No, but I mean, we're not gonna tackle it, we're not gonna tackle every single issue in one, I mean, we're gonna have several.
You can break it.
Yeah, we can break it down, yeah.
Well, you have a whole year to work on these amendments.
Yes, so we can do that. I, I, you guys agree on that?
I like the point.
At five thirty, half an hour before our meeting, a regular meeting?
And if it goes a little bit, then we can just, it's fifteen minutes maybe allowable?
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
So, after each regular meeting, starting when? Next meeting?
Next meeting. So, it's five thirty it starts our, and then.
And those are for the charter amendments?
Yes.
And please remember that we have budget workshops scheduled from this point on for every regular meeting, starting at four thirty. At four, sorry.
Uh, Jim, I know it's gonna be a conflict with the budget, and we do need to start already with the conflict of the scheduling. If we do this, could we, could we do the budget during our meeting? Or something like that, because we do need to tackle our budget, guys.
What we could, I'm sorry.
Since we're putting in conflict our budget with our charter.
Your meetings would have purpose, right?
Right, so it's at four, and it carries on to like six, right, if we're here for the budget. So, I mean, for the budget, right, and then our meeting starts. But since we're putting that we're gonna put our charter meeting at five thirty to six, could it be, could we be able to do at least, or move it to another day, our budget, so that we could be here?
Mr. Rodriguez?
The last two budget meetings were canceled because of lack of quorum. That cost us a lot of money, 'cause all of staff was here, our attorney was just sitting there and just collecting money, because nobody showed up. I think we should have them after our regular meetings, we're all here. There's no question about, is he gonna show up? I know Mr. Nevada has problems with his work, he cannot just up and leave.
Yes.
You know, Mr. Rodriguez and I, we have our own business, we can up and leave. So, I would suggest that we do it after our regular council meetings, and combine both, put an item for the budget and for the charter amendments. That way, we're all here, we're captive, and we're sure that we're gonna have a quorum. And that way, we're not wasting city money, two meetings now, meeting earlier today, it was a waste of money. And we gotta quit wasting money, our constituents deserve better from us. And this way, we're here. So, if we do the meeting after the meeting, I think that'll be the best, best way to attack this.
Ms. Diallo Bos?
And I also have, I'm self-employed, and so if I have a client in front of me, I just can't drop my client, even though I do tell him, I cut off, I can meet you and I can speak to you till this time, but sometimes it just goes over, and there's no way of stopping it, so. That was mine, I was here at the last budget meeting. Mr. Rodriguez was here, and the mayor was here.
So then, so then we'll make the motion to have it after our meeting, our charter.
And budget.
Budget and, and?
Well, we're not posted for the budget, for the budget, but we are for the.
But we'll place it on the agenda.
Yeah, just put a special right after when it's done. So, if it's done, if our meeting is done at eight, then at eight oh five, we start.
Could we, could we add, could we maybe shorten our agenda items, like until the budget meetings are done with?
I agree with that. Okay.
Yeah, the first, the first hand, we'll just approve.
Get reasonable.
Make sure ours is first, right, Mr.?
Make sure ours is first, right, Mr.?
I was just saying, yeah, yeah.
I mean, what do you think, if we shorten our?
I agree.
How many agenda items? Because right now we have.
We're up to upwards.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, forty-three, forty-six, and you're killing us to eleven o'clock here, so I agree with that.
Counsel, I think I have one thing. The problem that the schedule is done before, immediately after, is that's not a time circle. And.
Yeah, for the notice, the public.
The requirement is that we post date and time. And, I mean, there's some ways, I mean, you know, you could post it for, for every hour of the evening, if it's six at the PM and midnight, and simply cancel each one until you get there, but that seems, that, that seems unnecessary.
When will we be able to place such an item, saving whatever is left in the next time?
We could just put an agenda item.
To our agenda at the very bottom, we place two agenda items extra.
Exactly.
To discuss budget, and then to discuss charter management.
Okay.
Perfect.
Uniform to that structure, I like that.
And then if we don't have time, or it's, you do.
Yeah, we just delete the item, okay. Perfect. Perfect. Push those to the end. We'll leave those to the end. Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Senator Nevada?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Item number twenty-nine, discussion and action to cancel July four, two thousand nineteen regular council meeting due to a holiday and rescheduled budget workshop at four PM, and regular council meeting to Tuesday, July second, two thousand nineteen, at six PM.
Make a motion to approve the Tuesday, July second council meeting for six PM. And add the two agendas to it. And deny the Fourth of July meeting. And cancel the Fourth of July due to, yes.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number thirty-one, discussion and action to approve Resolution five seventy-five hereby establishing the fees and charges for building, plumbing, electrical, and mechanical permits and related inspections as passed in the Texas eighty-six legislature and passed into law House Bill eight fifty-two, effective May twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Senator Noguez?
Aye.
Senator Nevada?
Yes.
Rosalina?
Yes.
I meant to speak, but it, just for, for your, for the constituents here, some of our fees will be changing the way they were structured, because there was a House bill that was, House bill, correction, that was approved in the legislation HB eight five two. So we had to do an emergency change, and it might be changing again in the near future. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Item number thirty-three, discussion and action on the appointment of Carlos Hernández to the Historical Landmark Commission Place Two.
I'm sorry, we need to delete that item, ma'am. I'm sorry, I apologize. Mr. Hernandez will not be able to.
Oh, okay. Second.
Serve.
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Do we have a motion to delete thirty-five and thirty-six?
So move.
And thirty-seven. Second.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Page thirty-four, meeting adjourned.